I'd like to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Bloomington Common Council Land Use Committee for Wednesday, March 31st, 2021. We have one item on our agenda, which is ordinance 2107, to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by amending the district ordinance and preliminary plan for parcel E of the Thompson PUD regarding 300 West Hillside Drive. Tom Brennan, petitioner. So we talked about this a few weeks ago, and I believe Mr. Garlick, Eric Garlick is here from the Planning and Transportation Department to just give us a brief intro since we've already heard the petition once. Mr. Garlick, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, absolutely. Give me just a second here to get this going. All right, hopefully everybody can see my screen.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So I'll just kind of be brief here since, as you mentioned, we did hear this just two weeks ago. This is a request for Tom Brennan for a property that he owns at 300 West Hillside Drive. The petitioner is requesting to amend the preliminary plan and the district ordinance for the Thompson PUD to allow for this site to be redeveloped with a series of townhomes and mixed-use buildings. The site has been developed with a warehouse. It actually kind of encompasses two properties, a large property that is north of Hillside Drive that is predominantly developed with a warehouse, and then another property on the south side of Hillside Drive that is developed with a surface parking lot. So the petitioner is requesting to amend the preliminary plan and the district ordinance for these properties that are part of the Thompson PUD to allow for this redevelopment. So this is the site plan that was heard or seen at the last land use committee two weeks ago. The petitioner has revised this slightly, as well as given us some new renderings. The land use committee asked for rendering showing the west side of the building, and the petitioner has given us that, as well as redesigned some of the elements of Building 7, which is the building that is on the south side of Hillside Drive. So the overall changes to the site plan for the area north of Hillside Drive basically involve moving the roundabout further north to the north end of the property and aggregating the townhomes and moving the rain garden that was proposed to be located between some of the townhomes to the north side of the site. For the most part, the remainder of the site plan for the area north of Hillside Drive has remained the same, and I've got some renderings I'll show for some of these buildings. These are the west elevations, as well as some of the east elevations for the townhomes. So the council asked for some of the renderings from the west side to see what this would look like from the interior parking area, as well as from the neighborhood. So the image on the top-left side would be the portions of the townhome facing the neighborhood. The elevation on the top-right of the screen would be the east elevation. So this would be the sides facing the Switchyard Trail. Kind of moving north-south on the site for building number two. This is one of the mixed-use buildings. The elevation on the top-right would be the east elevation facing the Switchyard Trail, and then the elevation on the top-left would be the side facing the west, again facing the parking lots and the neighborhood. So as you can see, the petitioner has kind of carried through some of the architectural elements, the brick, the masonry base, the upper-floor cement siding, some of the patios that have been shown. So those will be duplicated on the west side of the building as well. And then again, moving further south, this is building number one, the southernmost building. This is one of the mixed-use buildings. Again, the top-left elevation is the west elevation, the side facing the parking lot and the neighborhood. Again, the petitioner has carried through all of the design elements and finishing materials so that they've accomplished the 360-degree architecture that is desired and promoted in the Unified Development Ordinance. You can see the entrance for the garage. This would be to access some of the parking that would be on the ground floor of that building. And then one of the other changes involved building seven. This is the building on the south side of Hillside Drive. So the rendering and the site plan that you see now was the previous version of that that was heard two weeks ago. The petitioner has modified that building somewhat to move it further to the east a little bit, as well as reduce the size of it. It was previously shown with four stories along the west side with a 15-foot step-back, moving up then to five stories. The petitioner has revised that to a strictly four-story building. Again, this building would have the bottom two floors used as parking with apartments on the upper two floors above that. So I'll kind of step through some of the revised renderings that have been submitted. So this is building seven. Again, this is the building that is south of Hillside Drive. This would be the portion of the building that is facing to the east. So this would be the portion facing the Beeline Trail. You can see the ground floor brick, four stories in height, and then the apartments on the upper floor. I believe, I'm sorry, no, I believe this is building number one. I'm sorry, I apologize. This is the building on the north side of Hillside Drive. I apologize for that. So this is, this is a building on the north side of Hillside Drive. So this is another rendering showing the west side of the buildings. Again, this is a site facing the parking lot and the neighborhood. So again, as I mentioned, just kind of carrying through those architectural elements, the brick, cement siding, the patios. So this is a site that the McDole neighborhood would see, both for the townhomes and the mixed-use buildings. So this is kind of an overall rendering showing what some of the west side of those buildings would look like in relation to the site as a whole. Switchyard Park is in the kind of middle of the screen, so you can kind of see how those buildings. The site plan that is shown here is the previous version. As I mentioned, the roundabout had been moved further north, but this rendering shows kind of how those buildings look along the west side. So that pretty much encompasses the changes that have been submitted. The petitioner can give a little bit more information. I think if the council needs more specifics or has some more questions on any overall changes.
Thank you, Mr. Garlick. Shall we move to the petitioner? Is Mr. Bruce going to speak on behalf of the petitioner? And please focus on what has changed and perhaps some responses to some of the questions that were sent via email. Thank you.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. Well, first, thank you for your time and for the questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bruce, can I just ask, do you need to have anything on the screen from Mr. Garlick's presentation, or can we stop the screen share?
I think we're fine. I think we can stop the screen share.
Okay. Then now you're not quite as tiny on my screen. Thank you.
All right. Well, first, thank you for your time and for the questions. I have quite a few things that I had written down, but I'll try to get through some of this. Some things that maybe I felt like were important from the notes that I took from the last meeting. A couple were dealing with this project, you know, this is not sprawl, that this, you know, we keep hearing, you know, people wanting to discount, you know, density in our town where we really want our density and trying to, you know, the idea here behind this project is to put density where we want it, especially along a very walkable, I'll say a walkable street, which is the Beeline, kind of our spine to our downtown. This infill development does just that and avoids sprawl. Part of this development is, as we came up with the concepts, was through the Bloomington Housing Study that was done last year, talking about the fact that our current housing needs aren't being met, and we need to plan for that. And there's only two ways, and that's infill development, or sprawl, or development on the city fringe, and that means providing more infrastructure to that area. So this is a perfect kind of project in the perfect spot next to the largest, newest green space in town. Some things that I'll add here that were brought up last time, some responses to a few things. One is, this is a very green proposal. And to clarify a couple of questions, we are looking at the townhomes being designed under the LEED for Homes certification, and all of the commercial buildings being designed under a LEED Silver. I did some research this week on the USGBC website because it was brought up that, well, there's all kinds of development projects that are just as green as this, and I completely beg to differ. There are nine Indiana University buildings that are LEED-certified or above, and all I could find were eight other buildings that were not Indiana University buildings. This PUD amendment itself brings seven more buildings to that. So not every development, they might be designed as green, but they aren't pushing LEED certification, and we're making that a requirement for anything that's to be built here. And I wanted to clarify that. I know along the green questions that were brought up, I saw some of the proposed amendments and issues, and we've had no issue with any of those. We had proposed this being, at least at a minimum, a cool roof, meeting those standards for slope or low-slope roofs, and we might even look at some of these having a vegetated roof, but we don't know that yet at this time. But we know that we will at least meet the, there was amendment for the 20.04.1110 in the UDO, and we have no problem with that at all. Again, we're hoping that the LEED items that we apply to this, I always hate to have our hands tied by one certain thing, but that was something we were going to do to meet LEED. As you all know, LEED is a system of points for doing certain things. Meeting certain energy efficiencies, you gain more points. So the, and being next to transportation hubs, you get certain points, and saving your runoff water, and all of these things. So these are all things that we would meet, but the green roof at a minimum. I would add from that, let's see, another part of this, again, it was brought up, is that we know, we all know, we have a need for affordable housing and differing housing types in our community. And most of the time, those, lately, we've been trying to meet those with apartments. The Habitat does a great job with their homes and with their new neighborhood on the very north end of the Beeline. What we've got here is a kind of a diversified housing type by adding the townhomes. And I say that because the city's plan, that the in-house plan that their own consultant did, and I know that wasn't released to the public, but this was a consultant that I would consider an expert in their field, looking at what the city needed. And in that plan, they had a much more dense development here with more parking structures, and I don't know, you know, they didn't get into in-depth on LEED or green, but those were all apartments. We've tried to make a mix of some owner-occupied homes with these townhomes, with these five buildings that have 19 units in them, and on top of that, as opposed to a house, and I know this was brought up, that there are houses that Matt Fresk did just up the street, and the city did not want us to just build $300,000 to $500,000 houses next to the park here. The townhomes are the most affordable way to build a residence. Your construction costs are less because they're shared with the party walls, but also your maintenance costs are less. So we've got a mix of apartments and townhomes, and you don't find too many townhomes, especially along the Beeline Trail. So that's another, I think, a big plus for what we're proposing here. Now, some of our changes, we certainly looked at all the questions that are asked and the responses and the notes that I took. So we took building seven, which at the plan commission level, they wanted the fifth story to step back 15 feet from the west side. But at our first hearing with the city council, it was brought up that that really wasn't acceptable, that they really, really wanted the whole story removed, and we have removed that. We have taken that story away. So that building, and we have, again, there's an amendment, I think, that was made for that, and we don't have a problem with that. What you see before you is a building seven is a four-story, less than 50-foot-tall building. Right now, we have two levels of structured parking within the building and two levels of residential use in kind of a U shape so that a lot of the interior units can have a view out to the park. And on that, I would just say, again, that's the one site that probably has the greatest parking ratio, and that is because, again, 20 of those spaces were leased before Mr. Brennan, when he sold one part of the building to Upland Brewery, then when they sold it to Mr. Shreve, those spaces were in that lease. So 20 of those spaces were leased, and then another 10, Mr. Brennan has leased to the two multifamily buildings directly to the west of this. So there's 30 spaces in that building, that parking structure, and the fact that it's built into gray, there's quite a bit of slope there. So our idea was, it was just easy to, if you're going to build into gray, half of that parking structure at the lowest level is below gray and not seen from anybody walking down the street. We also looked at, so that was building seven, we reduced the footprint of that building. After talking with Eric and Scott of planning, we brought the setback on the west side from five feet or six feet. I believe now we are 10, let's see, 12 feet along the west side. We also changed the south side from five feet to 10 feet, and then along the, along Hillside Drive, which is building seven's north side, we've brought that to 20 feet off of the property line, and now that area has a, I wouldn't say an eight-foot grass area up against the building, and then we have a sidewalk, and then we have a tree plot before we get to the street. So where that building was out within five or six feet off of the property line or off of the street, it's been moved back substantially there. Let's see, what else? Another question that was brought up, and I believe this, I think, was an amendment or not, and that was connecting to the Beeline. So it's always been our intention to try to connect to the Beeline as much as we can. And so the large apartment buildings, now remember, building seven has a plot of land that the city owns that is between us and the Beeline and the park. So there is another lot there. The building seven is not up against the park. And because we have an easement on the east side of it as well to get, to allow the warehouse to the south of us to have access, we don't have much we can do there, other than make that green while we can until, until so, at such time it needs paved. But on the other larger apartment buildings, on buildings two and three, or one and two, those two buildings, not only do we have a plaza at the corner where we've curved the building to kind of mimic the old railroad roundhouse, but we've created a plaza there. That design is, it's a plaza now. It will be either landscaped, it'll be at the direction of what the city would like us to see. If the city wants to, if planning would like us to put a piece of art there, we just looked at that as a gathering space out in front of the commercial, because we also recognized that that commercial space on that corner is probably one of the most accessible, easiest to be reached. Commercial space is along this part of the Switchyard Park, because of what happens further south of us, but also we have the creek on the east side that's in a floodplain. So this is an important commercial space, and we didn't want to bring the building all the way out to the corner. And I wanted to explain why we created that plaza. It's not to take away from the park, but it's to add kind of an amenity for people to gather and meet, because we figure that's what that place will be. But that building will have a direct connection to the Beeline, and then the building to the north of it, building two, will have a connection to the Beeline. There's an apartment door there that'll, or the door at that end of the building walks right out. Now, both of those buildings have ground-floor commercial space. We anticipate somewhere between 6,000 and 8,000 square feet of commercial space on the building on the corner with the plaza. And we recently looked at how we can do maybe 1,000 to 2,000 square feet of commercial space on the building next to it. And I'll get to why and what's important for that in a minute. The townhomes, which are buildings three, four, five, and six, initially, we had a walk that all of those townhomes kind of went out, a common walk that led you east or west to the park. It was asked at the last meeting, could the townhome units that face the park, after the plan commission meeting, we changed, we didn't have any units facing the park, we had a side of a unit. So we changed it, and each of those buildings has two units with raised porches that face the park. So if we, if it is requested, I mean, right now, both of those have two staircases that are right next to each other. So I don't see the need to have a, two separate walkways, three feet or four feet apart from each other, but certainly the ends of each of those buildings could connect to the Beeline Trail. And again, we have a swale that runs through there. If you've walked along the east side of the building that's there now, there is a drainage swale there, and I anticipate that that drainage swale in some way will stay, because I think part of that is not our property to go in and regrade. We're certainly going to try to gather up all of our rainwater that we can, but we may have a little, it may be small bridges or something that connect across there. So I don't, we don't have a problem with those units connecting as well. It just may be a single walk instead of one for each of those units, because they're, the way they're designed, those walks are right next to each other. Let me see what else we had. Finally, looking at something else, going back through the Schmidt Associates review of the project for planning, you know, one of the things that really caught my eye was the, most of those, we have the architecture, as you'll see with the renderings we submitted, we truly have 360-degree architecture. We didn't just put vinyl siding on the backsides of the building. We, you know, we carry the same style and character that we have around the other renderings that you've seen to the backside. Now, we have a couple of areas at the first floor where we have some blank walls, those are facing our parking lot or a side between units, because we know we're going to have electric meters, gas meters, and such like that. But you'll see, the additional site that I have provided you, we just kind of finished up yesterday, and it was basically taking the roundabout that is really there for fire-access turnaround, so that they don't have to back any equipment up if they were to have to respond to any emergency here. And Schmidt Associates wondered about that roundabout being moved to the north, towards the remaining part of the Storage Express building that's not part of our project. So we looked at that, and we, you'll see on that plan, we moved the buildings around to make that work, and we moved kind of, I'll say, our rain garden, our open space to that area. It gives us a little more buffer between the two buildings, and then it creates, it makes our parking lot, our drive, our alley there, it gives a kind of a turnaround at the end, so you're not pulling into a space and then backing out and going the other way. We did that without changing a single setback. We need every setback that you already have. So that site can be approved, or you can say either-or if you desire, as we go down this process, because both of those, there's no change in anything, it just depends on which one you like more, or if you decide that you don't really care. Part of that issue that we had then is we studied how we could do angled parking. And angled parking is great on a two-way street, but in this case, because even with the roundabout, this is a dead-end street, the angled parking is, you know, especially for those that live there that don't want to pull out of their space and have to drive all the way up to the dead-end to turn around and drive all the way back the other way, angled parking forces you to have to drive all the way to the north end of the lot to turn and drive back. And furthermore, it's a, being way more than 90 degrees, it's, it's an issue where I think we, we have a buffer yard as large as we can get now, we would have to widen this a bit to give us a wider drive down the middle to make that work. But we did look at it. We only lost a few spaces, so it wasn't an issue with spaces, it really was an issue with turning radius for cars and having a dead-end road with angled parking. I want to see what else we had. With that, I've got some numbers for you. This was also one of the other questions that came up. And so I went through all of our units, and I have kind of a breakdown by lot for parking and ratios, and I'll start with lot one, which is, what's the easiest way to do this? Which has our townhomes on it, which is buildings three, four, five, and six. If you take the surface parking lots, surface parking spaces there, we have 29 spaces. We have 76 bedrooms if you take the 19 townhomes with four bedrooms each. And that's a worst case, because we, again, we haven't really laid out the floor plates. We have an idea, but those could be three bedrooms, but I don't see any more than a four-bedroom unit. I'm anticipating they may be three bedrooms with an office or home office for somebody, but we wanted to go worst-case on this. That ratio is .38 for the townhomes. If you go to lot two, to the south of the townhomes, which is building two, there are 17 spaces roughly inside the building, behind, not visible from the Beeline, because we have some commercial space there. And then we have 18 surface spaces. We have 56 bedrooms, so the ratio for that lot is .62. Now, again, mind you, we have maybe 1,000 to 2,000 square feet of commercial space on that ground floor, along with those residents upstairs. If you go to lot three, which is the corner unit with the plaza, building one, we have about 13 spaces inside the building. Again, we have a lot more commercial space there, somewhere between 6,000 and 8,000. We have 51 bedrooms, so we have a ratio there of .50. Now, if you take all three of those lots and combine them together as the north side of Hillside, then you end up with a ratio of .49. Now, lot four is the one that, you know, obviously has brought up the most questions. We have two levels of parking, and again, this is not two levels completely visible above gray, because we're going to build down into gray and follow the slope of the land. So at one point, we have, at the very east side, you'll see all levels, but from the west side, you will not see one of the levels. There, we have 84 spaces in the garage, because we have about 40 to 42, so I use the worst-case number again, of 42 per level, so 84 total. We've cut a story off of the building, but we really had only had half a story left after the plan commission anyway. So we have 52 bedrooms there. And so that's a ratio of about 1.61, but for us, we know 30 of those spaces are leased. 10 will have a door to that, two buildings, the neighbors directly to the west of us for them to walk into the garage and access their cars, and then 20 spaces for Mr. Shreve and Storage Express. We also anticipate that this will be where, and again, and this is a point to emphasize here, is that if we want commercial in this building that's going to be viable, we have to have some parking for it. We want this to be not, you know, in the summer, I'd love this to be a destination, you know, where you get on the Beeline and you walk down here and you eat dinner. But in the winter, when the park is not being used as much and it's difficult to traverse, you're going to have some people driving here, and having this parking garage available, at least one level of it is what we're anticipating, where we can have parking for the commercial spaces. So the parking ratio there is great, but we've got to find a way to provide parking for this commercial use, or we end up with empty commercial space, and we've seen a lot of that downtown already. So that kind of breaks down at least everything that I had, to answer questions and kind of go over the changes that we've made, why we've made them, and hopefully that answers a lot of questions. So I also have Tom Brennan here to answer some questions. I have his attorney here, David Coleman, and I have Jeff Faniel here, who's the civil engineer for the project as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bruce. I just wanted to check, in the additional packet that we received, the last few pages are a West Hillside massing model and parking access and circulation. Is that from the previous study that the city administration did?
Yes, and I wasn't sure what, it didn't copy very well. But I wasn't sure if people had seen that and wanted to at least show that this is what a consultant looked at for this site. Again, it wasn't a study to be released. Who knows, you know, at what level? I'm sure it's just a cursory study. But it showed quite a bit, you know, more parking structures, more massing. It showed a 10-foot buffer along the west side of our property where we have a 14-foot. You know, it's tough to put a drive in here and park it and make something viable on this long, narrow site. But that's why I wanted to put that in there.
Yeah, I just, you know, it was in there without any label or explanation. So I just wanted to confirm that this was a past study and not something that is envisioned for this project. Before we go to questions, I wanted to pivot back to Mr. Grohlak because there was an email exchange about the PUD criteria to be applied here with a revision of this PUD. Mr. Grohlak, could you speak to that, please? I think it had to do with the affordability of the set aside and maybe also with the green building requirements.
Yes, certainly. So as we, Councilmember Flaherty brought up at the last meeting, and we had a chance to kind of review afterwards, the UDO does have specific guidelines for amendments to a PUD. So that was the section of the code that I had passed along that called for some additional higher level of commitments and requirements. So one of those is in regards to affordable housing and required that the, that an amendment go kind of above and beyond. And there were several different paths that were laid out for how that could be accomplished, either through an increased number of units beyond the 15% or by adjusting the income thresholds for individuals that would qualify for housing within that. So it required at least a 10% reduction from that maximum AMI. So the petitioner, you know, has not yet committed to which of those two are possible solutions that they could propose to meet that additional expectation. As I mentioned, they could either go above and beyond the 15% of units that are required to be set aside or lower the maximum threshold for the area median income for people that would be qualified for that. You know, as I did mention in some of the information that I passed along to the council, you know, the increased connectivity is certainly something that could be discussed, you know, with this. We've looked at vehicular connections and the location of this site and lack of any public right-of-way adjacent to this connects, to offer connection opportunities to really limit any additional vehicular connections. So certainly, certainly something that we can look at would be additional pedestrian connections. So that's where Councilmember Flaherty discussion regarding additional pedestrian connections to the Switchyard Park could be relative. You know, the UDO does not have a standard for pedestrian connections, you know, minimum, other than buildings are required to have a pedestrian entrance along public right-of-ways. So each of these buildings do have a pedestrian entrance into them from the Switchyard Park. So it's certainly up to the council's prerogative of whether or not individual connections to each of those doors would be necessary or a benefit or whether what the petitioner has shown meets kind of the expectations of the council. The LEED certification for this property and the project certainly is above and beyond what it would be required in any situation. And as Mr. Bruce pointed out, the fact that this would be LEED-certified buildings is very rare and unique. There are not, you know, outside of Indiana University and the city buildings, there are only maybe a few handful of buildings within Bloomington that are actually LEED-certified. So that certainly represents a significant improvement above and beyond what is required.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grohlak. Let's go to committee members. And we do have some amendments. But let's take questions on the petition as a whole first. Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you, and thanks for that follow-up. Well, thanks for the presentations to all parties. And thanks for the follow-up, Mr. Grohlak. I wanted to, I guess, ask for both petitioner and for Mr. Grohlak what their thoughts were about that additional criteria from the UDO about the affordability standards. I believe in an email you had indicated, Mr. Grohlak, that you thought the petitioner might like to go with the reduced max AMI to 108% of area median income for the affordable units. And my question is, is I guess for the petitioner, have they settled on which approach they would like to take? And for planning staff, whether or not we need to include that as a reasonable condition for approval of the petition or whether it is an amendment that is needed to the zoning rules of the petition itself? Thanks.
Um, I, man, I could answer that real quick for you before Eric. Yeah, your assumption is correct that it would be the reduction in the AMI would be the way that the petitioner would proceed with this project.
Okay, thanks. And Mr. Grohlak, did you have a guidance on, again, whether it would be a reasonable condition or an amendment to the zoning rules that would be the most appropriate way to memorialize that?
At this point, I think a reasonable condition would be the best way to solidify that.
Okay. If council staff, I guess while we're meeting, feels capable, based on the discussion, to draft something that we could display and consider, we could do that alternatively. I think we could consider it at a second reading since we've had this discussion. So thank you for those answers, both.
So if I may just follow up, the townhomes are, are planned to be for sale, right? Owner occupied. So would the, is the 15% of units at a lower, affordable at a lower area median income, will those be just rental units or are any of the townhomes also slated to be priced at a lower level?
So that would apply to the townhomes as well? That would apply for any of the units on the site, whether they're for sale or for rental?
And may I ask the petitioner, do you know yet how you would distribute between townhomes and rental units? How you would distribute the affordable units?
Yeah. Well, you know, yeah, we were just discussing that. There would probably be a reduction in price for the town. You know, that would be something we'd have to work out. But Jeff has had some experience with something like that on another project through the city. So that's probably how we would have to handle that.
So you would do some, some of the reduced cost units would be townhomes and some would be apartments? Is that right, Mr. Bruce?
Are we in the teenagers? Are you there?
I couldn't hear a response to my specific question.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Very good. Other questions from committee members? Yes, Councilmember Vollen.
Yes, I am particularly interested in questions of parking. So I'm trying to find the, sorry, I've lost. Here we go. So the first thing that jumps out at me is the width of the cul-de-sac. The roundabout that you have to handle fire trucks is a full 45-feet radius. Was that necessary? Did it have to be that wide? What's the standard that was used to determine the width of that? Because the inner circle is 18 feet. So you've got a full 27-foot-wide lane to go around this one-way circle. It's far more than any vehicle even a fire truck needs. And I don't know why the lane can't be half that width. Or if you can't devote the entire outside of the circle to parallel parking along the edge of the circle and then make parallel parking on one side of this alley that... Let me just start with that because I've got more questions about it. But why is the circle so wide?
Hey, this is Jeff Daniel. We did an auto turn, turning now, equal 38 feet. And that is, those are the dimensions we require to be able to make that vehicle be able to travel, go around that roundabout.
Who's "we"?
BioDaniel Associates.
No, but I mean, so you're saying that that's your internal firm standard? Or is that state law? Or what is that?
That's a ASH standard.
Okay. Because I'm looking at a City of Vancouver, Washington standard that has 35 feet without a center for an acceptable width for a fire truck turnaround. And like, I just, I find it to be like incredibly big. I mean, it's more like, do the lanes have to be so wide? Can you make the center wider? You know, if there's not going to be anything parked on the circle, that way you minimize the impact of the paved surface.
I don't have the dimensions of the truck in front of me. But the turning radius of a interior turning radius of the standard, say, a passenger vehicle is 15 feet. And you can imagine that a fire truck being much longer is going to have wider internal turning radius. And it turns out that 18 feet is required for that interior tire to make the turnaround the roundabout. There's overhangs in the front and rear of the vehicle that have, require the additional width. We have the, I don't have the diagram here in front of me. We have this mapped out. We've invited to the council sitting to see what's necessary to make that move.
Yeah, I mean, that combined with the width of the alley, the alley appears to be 24 feet. But with perpendicular parking on both sides, I mean, the alley looks as wide, if not wider, than Hillside Street.
You're correct there that that could be narrowed out. The new UDO allows us to use a 20-foot two-way dry aisle versus 24. And I believe the parking stalls actually can be reduced from 18 feet to, I think, 16 feet.
At the minimum, you should do that. I would also like to see if it's possible to, I mean, if you're going to have a roundabout that wide, I don't think it's necessary for a truck to have a 27-foot lane going all the way around it. Either put parking on the exterior of it or shrink it, you know, or rather enlarge the center so that there's more, less impervious, you know? That's what I want to find out more about.
I'll review our auto turn program to see that those dimensions are accurate and provide a copy to the council.
Finally, with respect to the perpendicular parking along the alley, I mean, my goal here is to make this look as much like a street as possible and not like a parking lot. Okay? If you could put parking on the outside of the cul-de-sac, I calculate you can get 12 to 14 spaces around the edge of a cul-de-sac this wide. That would allow you to turn the Switchyard Park side of the alley into parallel parking. It would be about 14 spaces. Like, it's roughly two to one. For every perpendicular space, you get one parallel space. But without losing any parking that you have planned for that you could, you could make that more street-like.
Is there, is there a question?
Well, I'm asking if they have any objection to contemplating that, you know? Do they have any problem with that idea?
As long as we can get the fire department's vehicles around that roundabout and still apply parallel parking, we have no reason to object to that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thanks for now.
Other committee member questions? Councilmember Flaherty.
I have a related follow-up for staff about the fire access. And I had some similar questions, I guess, about the design of the drive aisle versus the possibility of a public alley that Madison Street residences would actually have access to. That's kind of a bigger discussion. But I think the fire truck question bears on it. And my question for Mr. Grohlak, I guess, is where exactly is the fire, fire truck access guidance coming from? Is that simply the preference of the fire chief? Or is it a requirement of some kind? It's a little surprising to me, I guess, that in the case of an emergency and fire access being needed, that a fire truck couldn't simply pull into the drive aisle or alley, do the work that needed to be done, and then back out.
Yeah, so that, that guidance comes from Tim Clapp with the fire department. So as I believe, fire trucks don't go more than 300 feet into a site without having a turnaround. So they won't back out more than 300 feet. So as Mr. Fanyo was discussing, the width and radius of that fire lane is what the fire department has looked at and said would meet their requirements. Certainly, if we can tighten that up, we'll do that. But the design that is basically being dictated by the fire department.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I do wonder if positioning the roundabout at the north end has been sort of suggested as a change would change any of that. It seems like we'd be pretty close to the 300-foot, to being beneath that 300-foot threshold from Hillside.
Clarification? Can you hear me?
Yes.
There's a state statute that requires us, the fire department cannot back up more than 150 feet, not 300.
Okay.
Not just Tim Clapp.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. That's kind of what I was looking for on that specific guidance. That's it, thanks. I may follow up to take a look at the statute, but thank you.
All right. I had a question about the changes to Building 7, which I appreciate seeing the greater setbacks and such. What percentage of impervious surface then do we end up on that lot?
We are at 80%. We started with that one at 100 and we are at 80%. That's what we, when we brought it in to get the larger separation between us, the 12 feet on the west side and 10 feet on the south side. And that counts, right now, that is counting 24 feet maximum of a potential drive along the east side in our 80% calculation. So, you know, in the, we anticipate right now that that'll be grass unless the warehouse decides to move forward with seeking approval from the city for the, to approve that easement.
And Mr. Grohlak, what is the required maximum impervious surface?
So the plan, the plan commission approved a max, or I'm sorry, the plan commission approved a minimum landscape area of 20% for that lot for Building 7. So the petitioner has initially requested 100% impervious surface coverage. However, we had a condition of approval that said they had to meet a minimum 20% landscape area for that lot on Building 7. So that is what the standard is for that lot.
But I thought that we were at that point with the lesser setbacks that were presented two weeks ago or three weeks ago.
The petitioner had not modified the site plan to show the 20% compliance. So that was something that would have been dealt with at the final plan stage. But they went ahead and modified the site plan to show how they can meet the 20% minimum landscape area.
Oh, I see. And the environmental commission memo was speaking against that because the mixed-use district, what is it? MM district requires 60%, is that right?
Correct. So the environmental commission wanted to maintain the standards of the MM district, which has a minimum landscape area of 40%.
Okay. One other question for the petitioner, and that's about your timeline. If this is approved by the city council, could you let us know how quickly this might be developed? Or do you not know? Or do you not know yet?
Yeah. We're certainly not 100% certain as to the exact timeline, but the general feeling that we have is that it would be, it would be a prudent decision to go ahead and, and begin the processes as soon as we could beyond the commitments that we're currently undertaking with tenants in the building. And of course, that would initially start with raising the structure. And of course, it's all depending on financing and initially, beyond that, raising the structure and then trying to place the new construction at a reasonable time of the year so we can make some rapid progress to effectively put the project online.
Isabel, I would, I would add that, I mean, you're, you're a year away because you're, you've got to raise the structure that's there and you've got, you know, utilities, site design, building design, yeah, permitting. So you have, you know, six to eight months worth of design, even if you were spending your time working on moving tenants out and then starting to raise the structure that's there now. So that's, you know, that's probably a year, but, but the wheels would certainly try to get started fairly soon. There's just, it's a very complex project with a lot of pieces that will have to take place even while nothing is happening on site. And there's cer- there's current tenants in there now, as a matter of fact. So part of that, I think, is the, the emergency shelter.
The winter shelter for the homeless population.
Yeah.
And, and there's another shelter as well that they're, I, I, and though.
That's actually why I was asking. So would you estimate that those spaces would not be available for use as shelters for people experiencing homelessness next winter?
Would it be available to use this next?
Oh, well, that's a good, that's a good question. It's possible, yes. At least for a period of time. And I suppose that, you know, I don't know exactly how long to raise the, to raise the building, what that timeframe would be. I could refer to these other gentlemen, maybe they could give me a better idea.
Yeah, I, I, I thought about that. I figured that's probably why you were asking it is that, you know, we're, we're really almost through, you know, with the last process, mid-April. So we're almost through, I'll say, the harshest or the, the worst part of our winter that we see here. You know, with, given as busy as everybody is right now and given the, the amount of design that has, has to take place, I don't think there would be any need to start any demolition probably until after, probably about the same time next year. So you could probably get through the worst of next year as well. Because you, you, we, I mean, we, we've spent months and months just working on getting what you see now. And that, you know, that's a, each of those buildings is a huge project in itself. So I couldn't imagine that you, there would be any need to really start raising that until about this time next year. And then, so definitely you probably have this next winter as a use, I would say.
I might also add that we're not, we're, what funding available, availability will be for the Beacon organization. So a lot of that is just speculation on part of things.
Yeah, I understand that, but I appreciate your answer. And I also know that the, the shelters are operating under temporary allowances that might not be there next winter. So a lot of uncertainties there, but I appreciate your response. Councilmember Volan? We can't hear you.
Sorry, can I share my screen? I want to show this image.
Fine with me.
Okay. So this is the document I'm referring to. I hope everybody can see it. This is the, another city standard here in the States. And this is the 35-foot, you know, minimum roundabout with no, cul-de-sac with no center. But I'm interested in the item to the left here, where a T-shaped configuration. I can see with some creative geometry, a sort of less impactful pavement by using this, this, we have a 60-foot depth lane and another one perpendicular to it so that the truck can turn around. You know, the turnaround is for very infrequent, like, the trucks don't want to have to back out, but 99.9% of the time, that is going to be unused. If we can, I mean, do, can you see re-engineering the end? Like, can you see how this might reduce the amount of pervious, impervious surface? You know, and even maybe expand the rain garden? Can you imagine incorporating something like this into the end instead of maybe a roundabout? Or do you think that the roundabout is also for the sake of drivers?
Steve, this is Jeff Fanyo again. What you're talking about is a hammerhead turn, and that is acceptable to the fire department, meets state ordinance and could be utilized. However, anybody going down to the, any vehicle, say a resident or passenger vehicle that entered there would have to make the same maneuver. And if you had cars spewing up behind them, it might become a point of conflict between the vehicles. Whereas when you have sirens and lights, fire vehicles can do a lot of things that passenger vehicles can't.
Okay. I didn't follow all of that, but I, basically, you're saying that people, at least for the perpendicular parkers, they don't need to, I mean, they, the perpendicular parkers wouldn't need a turnaround to get out. They would just back out the way that they intend to go, right? The opposite way.
This, this is Doug Bruce. I, I would say, as we were studying angle parking, that, that's exactly right, except for if all those spaces are paved. So if two or three cars pull in here and they're driving down the, the, the drive here and there are no empty spaces and they get to this hammerhead, as you say, now you've got two or three cars and somebody's pulling in to back up, to turn around. And so I think that's why we have the roundabout, because as Jeff said, an emergency vehicle with its lights flashing can make a lot of people get out of the way and a lot of things happen. But you and I, or, or somebody driving our cars, and all of a sudden the car in front of us stops and now they want to turn it back up and I pulled into their space, that's the conflict we're trying to avoid with the roundabout.
Okay. Well, then my, my initial question still stands. I'd love to talk with Tim Clapp about this too. Like, what is the actual lane width, depending on the circumference, that the truck would need to navigate it so that we can minimize, you know, impervious surface? So what we can talk, we can catch up on that this week.
What you're saying, we do not disagree with. If we can make it smaller, we'll make it smaller. We, you know, again, we've
Good.
We've had to, I mean, that's not a, that's not a obstruction to us at all. I would love to have that smaller and lessen its impact and completely agree with you. I think it's a matter of what we, what the fire department will approve. And I think at
Yeah.
at DRC, that's where this was first brought up, because we didn't have a roundabout at all on the very initial proposal before plan commission. And Tim kind of stopped us in our tracks and Jeff had pulled up the studies of what we needed to do. So we can get that to you. And Eric is
Yeah, yeah, I want to talk about it this week. Yeah.
I will, I will verify the dimensions. Does this drawing that you're showing us indicate what size of fire apparatus they're designing this to?
No, it doesn't. It, I mean, I'm showing it more for, to, to see what's possible. I, I mean, this is, I caught this on very short notice. So I, I don't know what the apparatus is. I just really loathe to let our streets be dictated by the occasional appearance of a fire truck. You know, I'd rather that it be designed for the regular use. So anyway, but that's something, my questions are answered. That's something we can follow up with over the next week.
We can follow, we will.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Volan, if you could unshare, thank you. Are there other questions from committee members before we go to our amendments? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I have two more that are hopefully short. The first is, and I hope to start asking this for every planned unit development and just because we have the opportunity to discuss it. In addition to the affordable units, will the other rental units, will the, will the owner, the petitioner accept holders of section eight housing choice vouchers for those, for market rate units? Has that been contemplated at all?
It, it's not, it's not something I would say, yeah, that we've had any discussions on. I would say part of that reasoning is really because the, it's, it's hard enough to keep our heads above water to create what we need to create to get to this point. You know, as we all know right now, costs to build are as high as they've ever been at this moment right now. That's probably another reason why to not jump in and start building tomorrow. But it's not, I mean, I can honestly say it's not a discussion we've had yet. You know, it's kind of been worked on a little bit, but again, it's not a, it's not something, it's come up as a discussion.
Gotcha. Just, and just to clarify, I, I don't, whether or not you accept housing choice vouchers would not affect the, the income. It's just a question of, it's, it's actually a, a problem in Bloomington and a problem in many places that it's called source of income discrimination, that, that many, many rented multifamily units and landlords do not accept housing choice vouchers as a source of income, even though they would still get the, the full income amount. So I don't think it's a financial liability, but perhaps something to, to discuss further offline as well in terms of just a, an email or something to see if, if it's, after further consideration, petitioner would be willing, willing to state that they would accept vouchers.
Did you have another question, Mr. Flaherty?
The other one, and I, forgive me if this has already been discussed. I, I don't think so, but, or maybe we reviewed it briefly last week. Is the parking available to tenants and townhome occupants? Will, will that be decoupled in terms of its pricing? Like, in other words, if you, I think you get it, but if, if you rent a unit or own a townhome, can you do so without a car and benefit from that by not having to automatically pay for parking as part of your lease or as part of the cost of ownership?
Well, I mean, that's a good discussion. And, and, you know, we've had just a little bit of talk about that. I can't say that we've decided. And, and the reason is, and I think Mr. Volan might have some experience with this, is that there's good and bad with that. When, you know, it's, it's, the downside is that, you know, somebody has a car and now they've got to pay additional money. So their rent has gone up because they're paying more money to park their car. But the good side of that is, is that now you get people that want to move here, which is what we'd like to see, that don't have a car and they, they want to live here next to the park, next to the V line, and they specifically are not worried about a parking space because they don't have the car. So I've seen it on some projects where it's, it's obviously, of, of many of the apartment buildings downtown, you know, if they have a small parking lot, they're going to, that's a premium, they're going to charge for that space. And I've seen it, it work both ways as a detriment to people where they end up getting more, they, they don't need the space that they have. They're charging for them and they're not getting used because people aren't going to pay that to park there. So I, you know, again, it's, it's something that we've just started to discuss, but really don't have an answer for you right now to that. Like I said, it kind of works both ways.
Yeah, I think you're right in that it, it sort of harms one party one way or the other in the sense, I mean, if you're paying additional for parking or paying separately for parking, I guess, is that more accurate? From your unit, that cost is now visualized, you see it, but in theory, the, the cost has always been there. It's just included in rent. But now we're allowing people who are choosing the more sustainable option with fewer cars or no cars to actually benefit from that choice. So I, I wish I had brought that up earlier last week and perhaps considered a reasonable condition related to it, which, as we have with some recent planning developments in the past, I believe, too. But obviously, not something we can add to, to the list of reasonable conditions tonight. But I appreciate the thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to actually follow up on that. And I, I don't really understand the drawback for the developer to separate the costs. Can, is there something that I'm just not seeing?
I was looking at the drawback for the developer. I'm saying that there's, there's, there are some people that you might, that have a car, that need a car, that you, you're, you know, they may decide not to move here because now they're, they've got to do something with their car. They're going to have to pay more money to have their car. So they look elsewhere. It's, I don't, I've never seen it as a drawback to the developer. But I, I, and I see where it's got a good side for, again, people saying, well, I don't need a car. I'm not going to pay for this. So I don't think it's something that we would disagree with if, if you were to say that we had to do that. I'm just saying that I've, I've seen it kind of work both ways where it may change some people away. Then, again, you're talking, when you're talking maybe lower income, need a car, they're working two jobs and now they've got to pay extra to park their car and they can barely afford rent. So I've seen it work both ways on projects. It's, I'm not talking about it being harmful to the developer, I'm talking about being harmful to the tenant.
And so the, if it were decoupled from the rent, would, would, wouldn't, hmm. Well, this is an interesting question. I wonder if the 15% of units that will need to be affordable for people at a low income level, would parking be considered?
Yeah. I don't know. I, I, that's a good question on how the, the code is, is written as well for that. That's a, we could have uncovered a huge issue here.
All right.
So, so real quick, I'll, I'll just try to chime in here. So the, the affordability of a unit is based on what it costs to rent that. So if the developer has included a parking space in that number, then, then that's the price that they have to pay. So it would certainly behoove them to remove the parking requirement with that rent to, you know, not inflate the rent price and make it more likely to be affordable.
Wait, say that again?
So if, if the petitioner has included the cost of a parking space in the rent, then that rent is going to be more than if that was decoupled, because it's increasing the amount of that rent payment. So more than likely, the, the units that would be affordable would not have parking coupled into that because that would, you know, increase that rent space.
Right. And, and the affordability does not apply to parking spaces. So they wouldn't have to make 15% of their parking spaces cost, you know, $30 a month instead of $50 a month.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Volan?
Well, just to follow up on this, the, you know, what would the petitioners think about advertising two rents, one with and one without parking? In other words, the bold, the largest one is, here's the rent and then here's a discounted rent if you don't get a parking space. You know, it's, it's effectively the same thing, as long as they're always promoted together. But, you know, is that something that they would consider doing?
Yeah. So ask your, your question again, we're kind of discussing
Let's say it's $1,000 a month with parking and $850 without, or whatever the prices are, I don't care. You know, like, as long as you advertise two rents, you know, that's, that's, or as long as you prominently say, rent is this plus parking, the parking fee of this, you know, like, as, as long as the, it's advertised, you know, as long as the, the prospective tenant knows exactly what they're getting. If, if they expect free parking, you know, then yes, they'll be disappointed. But I mean, do you have any qualms about advertising it that way?
Yeah, yeah, the discussion is maybe, it's probably better to just decouple it so that it's, they just don't see it. I mean, yes, probably.
Well, we're just trying to avoid the scenario that you're talking about, which is where the person who does expect free parking and doesn't get it gets really upset. That's all.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thanks, just really weighing in on this. Is that okay?
Please, go ahead.
Okay.
As long as there's a question in there.
I'll get one in there.
I'll get one in there. My question is, we really have this reasonable condition so far, I would say in the last year and a half or since we, I started on Land use committee, I mean, since this new council started. I feel like we've been requiring this for new development, and I think it goes with our comp plan. And so my question is, wouldn't, well, also, 1/3 of low-income people do not own cars. My question is, wouldn't we want to follow the comp plan and make this a reasonable condition like we've been doing from the outset?
So that's maybe a question for Mr. Gurlik.
Yeah.
Yep. So in all of those situations, you know, that's been something that petitioner has already stated that they were planning to do. And so it kind of went along with that. You know, one of the difficulties from staff's perspective in that is it's very difficult for us because, you know, we don't review annual leases. You know, this would only come to our attention if somebody complained in the future and we were like, well, wait a minute, you shouldn't be paying for this. So it's very difficult for us to kind of enforce that on any kind of an annual basis. But like I said, in all these situations, the petitioners have already said, oh, no, you know, we're not coupling these two things together. So we can certainly require it. I just want to point out, it can be very difficult for us to enforce long term or to be aware of if it's happening. You know, we can enforce it, but it's very hard for us to be aware of.
All right. Are there any other questions before we go to the amendments? All right, I will move Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2107.
It's a reasonable condition.
A reasonable condition, I'm very sorry, yes. I move reasonable condition number one.
Second.
Thank you. So this reasonable condition requires something that the petitioner has already agreed to do, but it just makes it official. And that is that Building 7, which is the building south of Hillside, shall be limited to 50 feet or four stories in height. So, Mr. Gurlik, is, does staff have any comment on this reasonable condition?
No, certainly, certainly fine with us. And, you know, that was kind of in keeping with our position when this went to the Plan Commission originally was that that building be reduced in height.
Okay. Mr. Bruce, do you have any comment from your side on this reasonable condition?
No, it sounds like a reasonable condition to me.
All right. Any questions from committee members? Okay, then we will go to the public. And this is just on this reasonable condition to require that the maximum height of Building 7 be 50 feet or four stories. Members of the public will have an opportunity to comment on the ordinance as a whole later on in this meeting. So if you'd like to comment on reasonable condition number one, please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into chat to the meeting host.
There is one raised hand, George Costas. The hand has been raised for a while, and it's not clear to me if that is, if his comment is specific to the reasonable condition. I think I can unmute him and we can ask.
All right.
He should be able to unmute at this point.
Hello, everybody. Could you see me today?
We can hear you, which is the extent that we're going today, yeah.
Oh, yes. Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today, today I am here today to discuss some very important information that I believe can make Bloomington the greatest city on the east side of the Mississippi.
Hold on, Mr. Costas?
Yes, ma'am.
We're taking public comment only on reasonable condition number one to Ordinance 2107 about the McDoll PUD revision. Is that what you're speaking about this evening?
Yes, ma'am, of course. That is exactly what I'm speaking about this evening.
All right, go ahead.
Like I said, I am here today to discuss some very important information that I believe can make Bloomington the greatest city on the east side of the Mississippi. School grants, what should we do with them? I can answer that question with one word, followed by a well-thought-out MLA-style essay. Parlays, I come from a town called Whoville, a small town like this one located right under the east-west-south Beltway. That's right, I was born in a small town.
All right, Mr. Costas? It sounds like you are not addressing the issue at hand.
Excuse me, ma'am, I have two minutes to say exactly what I meant.
No, no.
No, only if it's relevant to what we're talking about.
It is relevant to.
It's not relevant. I object, Madam Chair.
All right, I think that that is all from Mr. Costas at this point.
Not that he wasn't entertaining, but.
Yeah, we really need to stick to the agenda. So anybody else in the public who actually wants to talk about this reasonable condition about Building Number 7?
There are no other raised hands, and I do not presently have any.
All right.
I just, I'm terribly sorry. It looks like Matt Sands has comments to make, and the person should be.
That's the same. All right, same ridiculous comment, non-comment as previously.
Okay.
So let us move back to committee members for reasonable condition number one. Are there any comments? Or I would also accept a motion.
Move Do Pass Recommendation on Reasonable Condition 1.
All right, we have a Move Do Pass motion. Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. So we have a Do Pass recommendation of 4-0 on reasonable condition number one. And I'm open to other reasonable conditions. Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes. Instead of reasonable condition 2, I'd actually like to have Mr. Lucas display a slightly altered version, which I've numbered reasonable condition 4 and sent to him just ahead of this meeting. So it is not in a packet of addendum, but he is going to display it in writing now. It is much the same as reasonable condition 2. Let's see, get my view on full screen here. It's the reasonable condition, instead of requiring each individual door or unit of the townhomes and other buildings to have a direct connection to the Beeline Trail, this reasonable condition allows that each townhome building that fronts on the Beeline shall have a direct sidewalk connection to the Beeline Trail. Based on the presentation, I'm sorry, I don't, I guess I actually didn't move to introduce the reasonable condition. So I'll stop talking and I'll introduce reasonable condition 4.
All right, it's been moved to second, so go ahead with your presentation.
Yes. Yeah, based on the presentation from the petitioner at the beginning of this meeting and my assessment earlier, I kind of thought we might head this way based on the front doors of the two units in the townhome buildings being so close together that it probably makes the most sense, given the swale and everything else, to have a single path instead of two side-by-side paths for those two units. So this would be slightly different than the site plan as in our packets in terms of the number of connections and direct connectivity to the Beeline Trail. But it would allow for a single sidewalk connection per townhome building, along with, of course, I guess, I guess the reasonable condition as written is specific to townhome buildings. But that's kind of the crux of it, the others I'm okay with as shown in the site plan. So that's the reasonable condition, and happy to answer questions and also hear feedback from Mr. Gurlik and/or the petitioner.
Yes, Mr. Gurlik, what say you to condition, reasonable condition 4?
So I don't really have any objections certainly and don't see any conflicts with it. I just wanted to, I guess, basically clarify that each, the intent of this is to change the proposed revised plan that we just received that has kind of the consolidated connection for, you know, two of the buildings, that each building individually have a connection and not just the, the each ground floor unit plus the building. So I guess I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that this would just require each individual building to have a connection. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, certainly, no objection from staff.
All right. From the petitioner, is there a reaction from Mr. Bruce to the reasonable condition number 4?
Perfectly reasonable. The only thing that we've discussed here that we would probably add, and maybe Eric can answer this, is that would this also require, any of these connections require Parks Board approval to the Beeline? That's come up here as a question. So, but we don't object to the, to the condition at all.
Yes, this would certainly require the Parks Board to approve any of these connections. So, you know, we might want to just put a clarifying statement in this that this is subject to the Parks Board approval.
All right. And moving on to questions, Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, have the existing provisions for connections to the Beeline Trail as shown in the various documents that the petitioner has made, have they already been approved by the Parks Board? Or is this all still pending the Parks Board?
These are all still pending the Parks Board.
Okay.
In the past, you know, I'd had conversations with Dave Williams about this site and connecting, and they said, you know, in general, you know, assuming it doesn't cause any conflicts with anything, they're happy to have these connections, but, but all of these.
What I'm saying is that we're not sending the petitioner back to Parks Board just to get two extra walks in.
Right. At this point, Parks Board has not approved anything.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, I have a question, and I, I wonder if Mr. Gurlik could pull up the new site plan with the roundabout at the northern end so we can see how it would change if this reasonable condition were implemented. So here I see that there's a sidewalk between the buildings, the northernmost buildings, Building 3 and Building 4, and then another one between Buildings, thank you, 6 and 5. So, Councilmember Flaherty, do you intend to have another sidewalk put between Buildings 4 and 6?
Between Buildings 4 and 6, sorry. No, I think that would be, the intent was to create, it looks like Buildings 3 and 4 and then Buildings 5 and 6 have an interior sidewalk kind of to each of those that also connects, and that doesn't exist between Buildings 4 and 6. But the intent is not to add additional connections or additional sidewalk between Buildings 4 and 6. The intent is to directly connect the units that front on the Beeline to the Beeline, as I think we probably would with any townhomes that were on a normal street. So since they're fronting on a trail here, we should, I think we should treat it just like a front in any other context, and the units should connect directly. So I hope that answers the question.
So looking at this, this image, Councilmember Flaherty, would, would the current plan meet your, what you're, what you're hoping to see as far as connections?
No, I think.
I'm a little confused, I'm sorry.
It's okay. If, if you look at Building 3 alone, for instance, you can see at the east aspect of that building, there is two, there are two porches indicated. You'd see two sets of steps. The intent would be to require a direct east-west connection to the Beeline from those joint front door entrances to Building 3, and likewise for each of the townhome buildings.
I guess I'm, I'm not understanding why that's so important and why those people in Unit 2, for example, the northernmost unit, can't just walk down to that sidewalk and access the Beeline from the path between Buildings 3 and Building 4?
Sure. I mean, they certainly could. We could have a single connection for all of the buildings combined as well. I mean, I think the question is, to me, what's good urban form? What are good walking patterns? What, how do people actually use space? Which is most typically to walk directly to their point of access. I think what you'll probably get is, unless there's landscaping obstructing people's use, they will probably just walk directly from their door to the Beeline if they're going to head north. And again, I think if we were fronting on a regular street, almost certainly, all of the units, individual townhome units that faced the street would have direct connections. So if we're trying to really make the front, the Beeline, I think, it's my, it's my view that good urban form dictates more direct connections, not fewer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gurlik, you could go ahead and stop sharing at this point.
So I guess just one question, just for our clarification. So in addition to, because, you know, the petitioner has shown kind of this common sidewalk between Buildings 3 and 4. So in addition to that connection, there would also be a direct connection, for instance, from Building 3 to the trail, there would be that common connection in the middle, and then another direct connection for Building 4. Likewise, for Buildings 6 and 5, you'd have a direct connection for Building 6. You'd have the common connection, and then another direct connection for Building 5. Is that kind of the intent, what we're looking at?
Yeah, I think as drafted, and my intent was not to affect any other connections. It was to make sure that the townhome buildings specifically just had direct connections. So other common connections, as, I don't know if those are as depicted, other common connections would be required right now? Or if some changes to that would be at the petitioner's initiative in the future? I'm not, I guess, clear on that point. Mr. Gurlik, I don't know if you can clarify.
Well, I don't, I don't think the petitioner was, you know, I would still certainly advocate for having these, these common connections as you've got a common sidewalk running down the middle of those buildings. So I would still certainly advocate for those two to remain. But I don't, I don't see any problems with adding a requirement, obviously subject to the Parks Board approval, for each building to have a direct connection in addition to those shared connections.
Sure, thank you.
Could we see the text of the amendment again, just to make sure that it's worded in a way to not get rid of the common access points?
Can I ask a question while we're?
So each townhome building that fronts the Beeline shall have a direct sidewalk connection to the Beeline. See, I, I think this may need to be clarified because currently each townhome building that fronts the Beeline does have a direct sidewalk connection to the Beeline.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of interpretation. I would say it doesn't. So maybe, yeah, maybe it needs clarifying what direct sidewalk connection means in this case. I could say shortest east-west path, or, you know, or we could clarify that it's in addition to common connections from between buildings. I'm fine not voting on a Do Pass recommendation on this reasonable condition this evening and editing it for future consideration at a, most likely at second reading, if that's how my colleagues, committee colleagues feel.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, I have a quick question about Buildings 1 and 2. How many doors are on the east side, will be on the east side of those buildings? Will they, I mean, I see one connection each for them directly to the trail. Would that correspond with the east, any east-facing doors on those buildings?
I believe it does. I look at the site plan, but I would imagine the petitioner can speak more directly to that.
As long as there aren't more than one door in those sides. I'm just trying to navigate the redesign project has been a challenge. Yeah, there we go. Will there be, will there be one door facing east? Okay, yeah, that's. Okay, yeah, that's, that, that answered my question. That's great.
Yes, there's each, we made sure that each of those two buildings each had one door. That's kind of the center part of the building where we-
That's what I thought, yeah. Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, any other questions about reasonable condition number four? If not, we will go to the public. And again, this is an opportunity for public comment on reasonable condition number four, which is adding some direct pedestrian connections from the townhome buildings to the beeline trail. If you would like to make a comment on that topic, you can use the raise hand function or send a chat message to the meeting host.
There are no raised hands presently and no chats.
All right, then we'll come back to the committee. And I, I will just say, I, I agree with this amendment, but I think that it needs to be phrased a little more precisely, because it could be interpreted as already being met by the current site plan, which is not the intention.
Maybe it's appropriate to move to postpone consideration. I don't want it, I don't want it to be seen as rejected. But I mean, we have to vote to withdraw it.
Yes, if there's no, I mean, we can vote on that, or if there's no objection, I could withdraw reasonable condition four at this point. With the anticipation of, of bringing a clarified version to our next meeting, whatever-
No objection from me.
That would be fine with me. Councilmember Rosenbarger, is that all right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I'd like to introduce reasonable condition number three to ordinance 2107.
Remember, okay.
Second.
I do mean number three. And yes, I don't know if we can display the text for this one as well. I'll go ahead and read the reasonable condition. It says, "The roof of each building shall meet the cool or vegetated roof standards of Bloomington Municipal Code 2.04.110 D2A4. Any portion of the roofs utilized for solar energy shall not be subject to this requirement." And this was sort of discussed through the course of presentations from petitioner and staff as well. I think normally, in the context of lead silver design, which I think is great, I would not want to be so prescriptive with something like this. And it sounds like the petitioner is already willing and planning to meet a sort of minimum cool roof threshold. It wasn't 100% clear to me, based on some initial research, that that would be strictly required in order to achieve lead silver certification. And the reason why I thought it was really important to include it in this case is because it addresses one of the two impacts of reduced impervious surface on the site as a whole. As we know, the, the petition requests a greater, the PUD amendment requests a greater impervious surface amount than would be allowed in a standard-based zoning district like medium-scale mixed-use or neighborhood scale. So for that reason, I want to make sure we are adequately addressing both stormwater runoff, which I think is being done via the rain garden, and things that utilities will be signing off on, and then also making sure that we're addressing any urban heat island effects adequately. So that's why, in this case, I thought it was important to, to actually prescribe and make sure that we are meeting the cool and vegetated roof standards with these buildings, which of course will help them achieve lead silver status. And it sounds, again, like the petitioner was planning to do. So happy to hear input from staff and petitioner and answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Mr. Garlick, do you have any input on this?
As long as this is something that the petitioner is amicable for, I don't see any problem from a staff perspective.
Thank you. Mr. Bruce, would you like to speak on behalf of the petitioner for reasonable condition three?
Certainly. When I first saw it, I, I think, I think I disagreed with it initially, because, again, it was kind of tying our hands. But, but really, as I mentioned in our presentation, when, when you go through and you look at the lead points, once you are trying to do anything above just lead certified, it really takes this to get those points, because you, they get more difficult to get. So this is something that we intended to do, you know. I didn't want us to be held to just a vegetated roof, but this allows us to do a cool roof or vegetated. And, and then when I really looked at, thought about why, you know, maybe this was being asked of us, again, I didn't see it as a problem, because we are asking for some changes to the type of zone that we are applying here, the rules. In other words, instead of 60%, we're looking at 80%. We're reducing it from the current 95%, but this white roof, I, I don't see this as a problem, because, again, it, I see why it's needed. So, and if we can, we certainly are going to try for a vegetated roof on one of the buildings, maybe more. But that, that starts to get into structures, because it's, those are really heavy assemblies that you're building. And, and so we didn't want to promise that, but we're going to certainly try for that. So I don't have a problem with this amendment, this reasonable condition.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the sponsor of this reasonable condition or staff? All right, seeing no questions, we will go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to reasonable condition number three, which requires a cool or vegetated roof on the new buildings? You can use the raise hand function in Zoom, or you can put in a chat to the meeting host.
I believe Andrew Gunther would like to speak, and he should be able to unmute himself.
All right, Mr. Gunther?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
All right, I, I promise I won't start singing. Thank you to the committee for the ability to speak this evening. My name's Andrew Gunther, and I'm Chair of the Bloomington Environmental Commission, and here to speak on behalf of our membership. In regards to the proposal by Councilmember Flaherty to require that the petitioner make their roofs cool or vegetated as according to the UDO, with all due respect, the Environmental Commission does not consider vegetated or cool roof methods to be an appropriate replacement for lost green space. Green space is more likely to be well-maintained, interacted with by residents, and effectively mitigate the impacts of climate change than green roofs. While undoubtedly a benefit to the environment and something the Environmental Commission wishes to see incorporated in more projects of this scale, we caution the council from completing green roofs with an acceptable loss of green space. We do not believe the impact is a one-to-one ratio. Rather, we believe we will still suffer a net loss of benefits to accompany, that accompany green space. Additionally, cool roofs, while admirable in their goal, do not replace green space by most measures. While it would help mitigate the heat island impact and assist in lowering utility costs, cool roofs do not replace green space in regards to runoff, habitat, native species, or a plethora of other benefits afforded by green space. Additionally, cool roofs tend to be cheaper, making them more attractive to petitioners. And we believe petitioners are more likely to choose the economically viable option of cool roof technology or green roofs, meaning the environmental benefit of Councilmember Flaherty's proposal is weakened even further when it comes to green space. If the council wishes to pass this petition overall, the Environmental Commission urges that this condition, condition of approval be included in the final version. We just urge the council members not to make a habit of replacing green space with green or cool roofs. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak to reasonable condition number three? You can use the raise hand function in Zoom, or find the chat button and send a chat to the meeting host.
There are no raised hands and no chats.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lacy. We will come back to the committee. Are there any final comments or a due pass recommendation on this condition? Councilmember Volan?
Well, I was going to say that, and with respect to the public comment, I mean, the buildings that are, are being proposed are replacing a warehouse. So there's going to be a net increase in green space here, because they're not taking up every square inch of the, of the land that's being developed, at least if my understanding of this is correct. So, you know, I think Mr. Gunther makes some good points, but I, I think they're more existential that, you know, they, I'm not sure I agree with them. Anyway, thank you.
Any other comments on reasonable condition three? Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure, just briefly, I appreciate Mr. Gunther's sentiments as well. And I'll just clarify that I don't think of cooler vegetated roofs as a, as a replacement for, for green space, and wouldn't generally make a habit of, of, of that sufficing. I think we're looking at this in the context of a, of a whole proposed PUD amendment that includes a number of other benefits and has some unique context as well, and want to make sure that if this is approved, that we do go ahead and have, as much as we can, done to address some of the negative impacts of a high level of impervious surface. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comment, or is there a motion?
I move a due pass recommendation for reasonable condition three.
Second.
All right, and I'll just go down my screen again here. Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. So that's a due pass recommendation of four, zero on reasonable condition three. Are there any other reasonable conditions out there? Okay, I don't hear of any. So, of course, we do, we are able to bring a reasonable condition also next week to the full council, if we so desire. So going back to the, the ordinance as a whole, are there any final questions before we go to comment? I mean, for, to public comment? Yeah, Councilmember Volan?
Yes, to the petitioners, what is the total, remind me the total amount of commercial square footage that you're building on these properties? In Buildings One, Two, and Seven?
Steve, can you, can you repeat that? We were in the middle of a discussion here, so I missed that.
Yeah, I'd like to know, what is the total amount of square footage, commercial square footage, that you'll be, you intend to build in Buildings One, Two, and Seven?
So in our, in our documentation, we have 1,000 square feet at a minimum in Building, I get lost here, Building Two, and 7,000 in Building One on the corner.
Okay.
It's anticipated that we could be 1,000 to 2,000 in Building Two, and then maybe up to 8,000 maybe in Building One. We just, we don't have tenants at this time, and we were worried about parking issues and all of that.
Well, do you have any kind of formula you're using to determine how much parking you supposedly need for the commercial space?
No, I mean, when I, when I went back and looked through some of the requirements, the formulas that the city has, we are, we're, we're off the map as far as low on anything for the amount of square footage. We, that's why, you know, the, the spaces in the garage have become important. We don't have enough space behind Building Two to make that work for the tenants and a large amount, so.
No, no, I, I mean, I, I get it. I'm just, like, you have calculated how much parking is available, you know, on, for the buildings north of Hillside, and then there's a whole lot more. And I know 30 of those spaces are for off-site obligations. But the, the standard that I found in SHOO back in 1995, when they did a study of 40-some cities across the country, the, the standard across the country was around 2.1 spaces per 1,000 square feet. So if you're going to have 10,000 square feet, 20 spaces should suffice for, you know, your, your uses. And I'm just trying to figure out how many spaces you're planning to build in the name of commerce.
Yeah, yeah, and so the, when I, the initial number I looked at was, I started with three per thousand. And, and, you know, where we're, where we're really kind of at, if you look at having, again, because we're next to this park and next to the beeline, if we were at 8,000 in one building and 2,000 in another, again, let's say our maximum square footage, if we were at roughly two spaces, we were looking at 20 spaces needed for those, hopefully that we could have some turnover. So that's why I was saying, in the, in the parking garage portion of Building Seven, if you, if we have 40 spaces on a level, and we've got 20 that we need, and we, and, and we've got 20 that we need for Mr. Shree, there's one level of the parking there, then that leaves us, on the other level, 10 spaces for, that are leased to the two apartment buildings to the west of us. And so that leaves us 30 spaces for our tenants, for our 50, let's see, what did I have? For 52 bedrooms. So, so, so two spaces was really kind of the minimal number I wanted to look at for our square, our, our per 1,000 square feet for those spaces, at worst case of 10,000 square feet of commercial.
Okay, well, I mean, if, if you were to reduce it to 20, which I think is, you'll find is more than enough, especially if you're pricing things correctly, you know, to what the market will bear, it might allow you to unperpendicularize half of what I've come to call Beeline Alley. Like, I'm eager to see that be a real street. And like, 30 spaces for 10,000 square feet, three spaces per 1,000 square feet is high, very high. So I'm wondering if there's a way you can't find to reduce it by nine or 10 spaces? And ma, and make, I have a minor follow-up question, which is, have you thought at, at all about naming the alley, making it a named street, and then giving the buildings addresses on, you know, a would-be Beeline Alley instead of, because the buildings clearly have an east-west orientation. You know, whether it's Beeline Trail or not, they should have a, they should be like 1309 South, rather than whatever it is, West Hillside. See what I mean? Any thought about that?
Yeah, you know, I, we certainly know that there'll be a name there for, for that, I would say. But I guess the part of the discussion I saw in some of the emails and responses from Eric was that, you know, I don't think we'll ever, I mean, again, and Jeff and I were just talking, you know, about some of the reductions that we can try to make in the width of the street and the width of the, the depth of the parking spaces. So we can gain some space there. But will we be able to get this to meet the city's street standards? And I think Eric had addressed this, and one of the answers, as this was asked a question in the emails back and forth previous to this meeting, is that there was probably the thought that it wouldn't meet city's street standards, and would the city want this to be a city-dedicated street? I, I thought that that answer was no to both of those. But certainly, as, you know, as an alley, Steve's alley, what is, is this?
Well, listen, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not concerned about raising the alley to the level of a typical street. I simply, you know, I mean, if I'm the only person who thinks that, you know, no one's going to see Building Three with a, with a hillside street address, like, like it's going to be hard to find it, okay? It'll be easier to find it if it has an address. I mean, you know, when IU closed off, the sample, put the sample gates in, the Union Building was still on Kirkwood, even if they had a turnaround on it. I see this as the same thing, okay? This is still sort of a, an address with a north, south, it's, it's south something, not west something. And so like, I'm not that hung up, I mean, I'd like to see it look more like a street. I don't like perpendicular parking, okay? If even one side of the street could be parallel, it would look more like a, if, an alley, a real city alley, a real city street, even though it doesn't raise to the standards of it. But that's what I'm going for here. a real city street, even though it doesn't raise to the standards of it. But that's what I'm going for here.
Is there any other question?
I just want to hear the follow-up for Mr. Bruce.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we were just discussing here, if, you know, if you look at that, well, we don't have to pull it up right now, but if we look at the, the revised site that I sent, where we moved the roundabout to the north end of the site, then it may allow us to work the angle parking in.
You'll just make people go further.
Yeah, you just have to, again, because of, once they pull back out of their space, they'll just have to drive all the way up to the roundabout and come around to go back the other way. But that would certainly make sense and something that we'll, you know, try to work on.
Okay.
And, and again, all of this will narrow down a bit and maybe hopefully the roundabout will get smaller.
I'm eager to follow up with you in the next week. I'd like to explore this topic with you all. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from committee members before we go to the public? All right, seeing none, we're going to move to public comment on the ordinance as a whole. Ordinance 2107, amending a PUD to allow development in the McDoll neighborhood. If you have a question, please use the raise hand function in Zoom or you can click on chat and type a message to the meeting host. I see we have one raised hand.
And Michael McBride should be able to unmute.
Good evening, committee members.
Hello.
Am I able to share my screen?
Not at this time is, what, what is it that you want to show us?
Problem, I was going to share a couple of the pages that were from the agenda items today with a couple of highlights on them, but I can walk through verbally and that's fine.
Okay.
So I'm here this evening representing Storage Express and Jefferson Shreve. And to express some concerns with the project, some reiteration of prior concerns and some new details about the concerns that were previously raised. And just to say that overall, the request of the amendment is not opposed, but to the extent that the amendment being proposed in the preliminary plans, Mr. Shreve does oppose them to the extent that the plans ignore or adversely affects his rights. The concern that we have here is the amount of detail that's going into these preliminary plans and the lack of recognition of some of the things that would affect my client and Storage Express to the north. The two things that are, I think that are most of concern are, one, the possessory rights that Storage Express and Mr. Shreve has in the space where building number seven is being proposed to be built. The second would be dealing with the demolition of the building as his building is currently connected with the building that's being demolished. When discussing the parking spaces, there's a possessory right to a number of parking spaces that make up, it looks like approximately a fourth of where the building number seven is going to be built. And we've heard tonight some information that perhaps those spaces are going to be moved inside the structure. Currently, and here, while we're here raising concerns, is my client hasn't been involved with any of the discussions of what would happen with those spaces. And would like to make sure that the proposals are something that are reasonably accepted to him under his lease terms and try to figure out what's going to occur with those spaces, not only after the structures are being built, but what's going to happen during the construction? When the building is going up, holes are being dug, and all of a sudden, those spaces no longer exist for a period of time where my client has a possessory right to them. Are they going to be replaced and is there a proposal for them to be in another spot of this proposed construction plan where other buildings are going to be staggered during the construction? Or is this something where those spaces don't exist for a period of time, including the adjacent tenant, who I also believe has spaces or adjacent property owner? And where are those cars planned to be parked? Are they going to be moved to neighborhoods during that time? What is the proposal for these parking spaces? The second part of this would have to be with the building and the development. There's a lot that is being proposed here on very specific setbacks. The amount of space that would be between my client's property and the closest adjacent building. During the last committee meeting, we heard comments from the owner about, for the first time, about potentially deeding a foot to the north after this amendment takes place to my client, which we, we don't know any of the details about that. But more specifically, we've been told that this can be done, that the property can be demolished and removed. But we don't have any engineering report showing that it can be done. We don't have any details on what damages is expected. We don't know what's being proposed for the reconstruction of the side of my client's building, the materials, colors, anything. We don't know what timeframe it's going to take to complete the work. We don't know how the Storage Express tenants on the south side of the building might be affected. We don't know how this might affect water, electricity, meters for the property that are currently in place. And so there are a lot of questions that are still outstanding. And my client would like to be involved with trying to work through these issues, but currently is in the dark and has concerns about the plans that are being currently proposed and the reliance on these plans without working through these issues ahead of time. And that it might be putting on just some of these matters, a little bit of the cart, the cart before the horse. And so we wanted to express those concerns, oppose this preliminary plans and amendment just to the extent that it affects and negatively affects my client's rights and ask that, if possible, that any final plans that are going to be subject to approval would take into consideration and require my client's consent and approval so those rights are not affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who would like to comment?
I have Andrew Gunther, who should be able to unmute.
All right, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you to the committee for the ability to speak this evening. My name is Andrew Gunther. I'm chair of the Bloomington Environmental Commission and here to speak on behalf of our membership. I will not spend long rehashing what I've already said at the last meeting of this body regarding this project. The lack of green space remains deeply troubling to the Environmental Commission. It brings about questions of environmental justice, equity, and our commitment to the plans and stated principles of our community. It also raises deep concerns about the future of development around Switchyard Park. We understand that we are replacing a warehouse with this proposed development. However, compared to the 60% impervious surface limit that this project would be likely to held to where it's not a PUD, it's a loss. This is not just my opinion. This is the opinion of the commission's full membership at the time we reviewed this proposal, advised by the city's senior environmental planner. I'm simply here as their representative. The Environmental Commission has dedicated an unusual amount of effort to this petition and a bid to oppose it outright. This is because it seems not to be, this seems to not be a popular proposal with many outside of the administration and the petitioners. I urge the council members to carefully consider the future development in this area that concerns the public has repeatedly addressed and the position of the leading environmental and development advocacy group in city government. This Environmental Commission is not opposed to all development. We worked diligently during the UDO process to advocate for various amendments that we believe would benefit both the natural and built environments in Bloomington. These amendments were introduced by both plan commissioners and council members, incorporated into the final draft and passed by the council. Now we are simply asking the council to apply the logic and reasoning behind the UDO to this site plan as well. PUD should not be used to lessen environmental requirements. This is not a matter of aesthetics. Rather, this is a matter of principle and proper site design. The Environmental Commission has legitimate concerns regarding flooding, runoff, and other impacts of a changing climate of this site plan. As our climate changes, the decisions of today will increase in impact exponentially. We will be even more grateful for green space in the future and we will mourn the green space that we have lost. There will be, there must be a balance between green space and density. We should not be building as densely as possible around the park simply because the park exists at the expense of green space and other environmental features. We do not need to find that balance, however. The community and the city council found that balance to be 60% when they passed the UDO. Let us continue by the same logic we went by in 2019. The Environmental Commission urges you to forward this to the full council with a negative recommendation. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have one more person. Kevin is the screen name. And the person should be able to unmute themselves.
Okay, start with your full name, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Kevin Sterns Brunner, and I live in McDoll Gardens area. And, you know, I have to agree with the Environmental Commission on this. I don't think the city should be allowing parkside development to be held to a lower standard than other developments in terms of green space. This would make for a very dense development with very little green space right on Switchyard Park. This seems inherently wrong to me. In fact, if approved by the council, the development would be allowed to reduce normal green space allotment by about 50%. I, I just really think it's important to set a high standard for development along Switchyard Park right from the start. And on another point, I do have a question about how many parking spaces are going to be available for people living in this overall development? I haven't really got, I think I heard a half a space per bedroom. Is that right? Or I'm a little confused about that and I don't know who could actually answer that question for me. How many parking spaces are there per bedroom?
We'll follow up and ask that after public comment is over.
Okay, I'm curious. It doesn't seem to me that there's enough parking in this development. And I think it's going to lead to the parks, parking lot being used for the developments parking. And I, I think that's unfair to other residents in the area who drive here to visit the park, which is already very popular and very busy. And there's a lot of people using this park in this area already. So I think the density is a real problem. And I think you guys need to really think about that before we set a precedent here with development along the park, since I'm sure it's going to proceed, you know, to be developed all along the park on both sides in the coming years. And this is the first major development on the park. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
There is one comment in the chat that I'll read. It is from the screen name Stephen Lehman and says, "The height of this project is greatly reduced, but is, is still too tall. 25 feet would make this project a good neighbor to the homes along Madison." And that's the end of the comment. And I do not see any other raised hands or messages in the chat at this time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lacy. We will come back to the committee then for follow-up questions. And I will just jump right in and ask the question that Mr. Sterns Brunner asked. How many parking spaces will there be for the new residents per bedroom? Mr. Bruce, can you summarize that for us?
Yeah, this is part of what I went over in the beginning and I, you know, we've tried to balance, again, because we're next to the park and next to the B line, we've tried to balance this with what is typically required on other projects. The, if you took the buildings on lots one, two, and three, so everything on the north side of Hillside, and you count the spaces that we have currently shown now, which, which will change if we're going to do some angle parking, we're going to lose a few spaces. If you, if you take those and you take the spaces that we have inside, the few spaces we've got inside of a couple of those buildings, then that puts our parking ratio at 0.49. If you take building seven on lot four on the south side of Hillside, and you count all the spaces, including the 20 that are leased to Mr. Shreve, which we would be making arrangements to have those parked on that site across the street while building seven was built. So I don't think that's going to be an issue. But anyway, if you take those spaces, then we're 1.61.
All right, thank you. I actually did, did some math myself of the figures that you previously gave, Mr. Bruce, and it looks like overall we have a ratio of 0.61 per bedroom, but of course, we have to consider there is commercial space as well. Does that sound right?
It sounds higher than what I had come up with, but I look at my numbers as well to see that, yeah.
Okay.
My biggest strong point.
And Mr. Gurley, could you say how that compares to parking requirements in the mixed-use medium district? If we were, if we did not have a PUD, if we had the MM zoning instead?
Well, it's difficult to say because we don't have specific bedroom counts per unit. So for instance, the minimum parking requirements are based on how many bedrooms are in each unit. So for instance, you know, a one-bedroom unit is only required to have 0.5 spaces. A one-bedroom unit is required to have one, a two-bedroom is required to have one and a half. So the petitioner at this point has really just kind of given us a possible number of bedrooms for each building. You know, not, there's going to be three one-bedrooms, 22 bedrooms, and, you know, some number of threes for us to really kind of go through and do that analysis. So it's really kind of difficult to say.
Well, that become more clear when a site plan is submitted? This is, this is just the PUD amendment. There's still a step.
Right.
For the site plan, right?
Correct. There will still be a final plan approval that will come forward, that will go to the plan commission. So we'll just make sure that it meets all this. The petitioner has proposed, you know, in essence, minimum parking requirements for this project. The parking maximums would still be held to the UDO standard. So we would just make sure that they meet all the standards that they're outlining right now.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted to also follow up on Mr. McBride's concerns. Could the petitioner speak to communications that have been ongoing with Mr. Shreve about the Storage Express part of the warehouse?
Yeah, yeah. So, well, so what I'll, what I'll say here is, is that, first off, as to the parking, because that's, that's where he started. There are 20 spaces. Certainly, Mr. Shreve is already involved in his attorney to speak on his behalf. So I would imagine that, well, first off, our thought would be is that before we build building seven, his spaces wouldn't go away. Most likely, we would accommodate him on the north side of Hillside to build building seven, so that he would have his space. So, and again, there would be some discussions with him. The, the issue is really about all of his questions. The, it's kind of a moot point. If we don't get this approval, then there's no need to have gone down that road, spend money on attorneys and designers and architects and engineers to look at how we make this work, to, to detach the building. Right now, there is a four-hour party wall, concrete block between the buildings. And Mr. Fanyo's firm actually did the build-out for Mr. Shreve years ago when he did Storage Express. So we have drawings of the floor plan of the building, of the structure. And we've been in the building on Mr. Brennan's side to look at the structure. And what we anticipate right now is that Mr. Shreve will gain some property because there are some columns just on our side of the bill, of Mr. Shreve's wall, the wall that they share, that we will leave in place and encapsulate and then turn that part of the building, that wall into an exterior wall. So nothing is impossible. I've seen way more complicated things done. We've already looked at it from our side. We, just because we haven't communicated with Mr. Shreve this, is that we, we already know that, that all of that time and energy spent on that is kind of a moot point if this doesn't get approved. We're, you know, once we detach these buildings, Mr. Shreve's wall will be an exterior wall. We're, you know, once we detach these buildings, Mr. Shreve's wall will be an exterior wall that will be taken care of at Mr. Brennan's expense. And I'm sure there'll be attorneys on both sides working out how all of that happens. But again, that's a pretty big expense for at least Mr. Brennan right now, that he doesn't need to look at if this doesn't get approved. So the parking will be accommodated. Certainly, he has a lease, so there's no, just those faces going away. I don't know, I mean, I, 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 I think that everything that Mr. Shreve's attorneys, Mr. Shreve's attorney has said is valid points, but not points that at this point that are a important consideration, given where we are in the process. It would be like us going ahead and picking out, worrying about what color of faucets and what type of faucets we're going to use for the plumbing of these buildings, when we're just not at that point on the order of decisions. That's just not something that needs to happen yet. But you can rest assured that, given attorneys, that that'll be worked out before anyone steps foot on anyone's property.
All right, thank you. Are there any other follow up questions? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. I, I think this question is from Mr. Gurlik. Just wanted to touch on the impervious surface comments from Mr. Gunther. I mean, I would say I have, I have a bit of hesitation with this, that it's not what the comp plan calls for. And so can you just remind me what the comp plan calls for? And then this, what's happening here is 80%, but is, I thought I heard Mr. Gunther say 60% is the comp plan?
Well, so the Unified Development Ordinance for the Mixed Use Medium-Scale District requires a minimum landscaped area of 40% or conversely, a maximum impervious surface coverage of 60%. So the petitioners have requested to have a minimum landscaped area of 20% versus the 40% that's been required. You know, and one of the things that we've kind of pointed out with this project is it's a balance between compact urban form, making the highest best use of a piece of ground that is infill development right along a switchyard park, a huge park, where we want to get as many people as possible. You know, the presence of a large park and a substantial amount of green space, you know, meets the community's needs for open space, green space, recreation area. And so the requested deviation here is just a balance of that compact urban form. This petition has incorporated green space. They've incorporated a buffer yard between this and the neighborhood to the west to help separate this and provide landscaping. So it's just a balance of requests with this project, this specific development type versus, you know, the presence of a large park that is immediately on this property. And so you see this oftentimes, you know, in large communities and cities where you've got a natural park that helps aggregate open space and green space for better use, you know, rather than, you know, small little open spaces on a piece of property by aggregating that in one open space, it provides a much better benefit for the community. So that's kind of been our position with this.
Thanks, I have a follow up. If, I mean, the UDO, you know, we knew Switchyard Park was there and it zoned the way it is for a reason, right? I mean, I don't know, if we wanted something different there, why didn't we zone for that? And so, I mean, I guess, I don't know, like, why, why is it incompatible? Like, we knew the park, do you get what I'm saying? Just like, why didn't we put in the allowance that you think is, is right? If like, we're allowing for this, if we're like, we think this is fine. And like, why don't we just do that in the first place?
Well, so the, the only zoning district that we have are zoning districts that we have within Bloomington that allow for any kind of a reduction of minimum landscaped area below that 40% are the downtown zoning districts. You know, the downtown zoning districts have a higher allowance for impervious surface coverage. But this is obviously not in the downtown. So it would not be appropriate to zone this as, as a downtown zoning district. So because this is already in a PUD and they are requesting to amend that, this is where the council gets to input their their, their factors, the different factors that come into play for, is this an appropriate type of development? So what we've been looking for here, again, as I mentioned, is a compact urban form right along a park here where you've got lots of access for pedestrians. You've got a major open space right of front door here. So, you know, this is very similar to the Matt Press development that's at Morton and Dodds, where you've got a reduction in the amount of open space because you're trying to achieve a different product. So, you know, there are very few locations in Bloomington where you've got absolutely no environmental factors on a piece of property. You know, this particular property is one of them. You've got no sinkholes, no tree canopy coverage that you're trying to preserve, no steep slopes. You know, so this provides an ideal location for a higher density project with reduced parking because you've got such great access, both for pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicles. So it's just, like I said, a balance of what we're trying to achieve within the community, providing more housing units for all of the community as a whole. And this location is an ideal location and we certainly want to spur redevelopment along the Switchyard Park. So, you know, the mix of apartments and commercial spaces here is furthering a lot of the goals within the community, especially encouraging private development along the Switchyard Park. Does that help, does that help?
Thank you for that, yes, it does help. Thank you for that answer.
Are there any other follow up questions before we move to final comments? All right, seeing none. Would my fellow committee members like to make any final comments before we move on to a recommendation? Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, thank you. Thank you again to members of the public and Mr. Gurlik and the petitioners for presenting and answering questions and sharing concerns and comments. Just to review, our standard for PUD amendments is Title 20.06.070(c)(4) in the new UDO. It's actually quite specific about how we, how we review these things. And I think we are there or close to there in meeting the intent of the Unified Development Ordinance in how we should allow, how and when we should allow PUD amendments. I'd like to abstain this evening on our due pass recommendation because there's still a few outstanding issues that I think we need to work on and address. But in general, I'm feeling favorable with this project. There are some substantial benefits here in terms of, obviously, the affordable housing, which is above and beyond what's required, even if the incentive section of the UDO is met. And of course, if this was zoned, a base layer zoning district, there's no guarantee that a developer would, would choose to take advantage of any of those in height incentives. It could be a development with zero affordable housing. So the fact that there are both owner occupied and rental affordable housing units that will be capped at 108% AMI, I think is a really significant benefit. And as petitioner mentioned, this is the type of, this is the type of location that I think is well suited to letting people live closer to, A, walkable and bikeable transportation options for folks who maybe work downtown or work on IU's campus. Not only will they have the B line, but also soon the seven line to connect, as well as, B, just living relatively close to jobs amenities, city center. You know, if we reduce the number of units that we're able to, housing units that were, and just homes, that we're able to add to infill development, that, that development goes somewhere. It goes to Alitville, or it goes to the county, or goes elsewhere instead. And that, that is sprawl and perpetuates a lot of the, the problems with, climate problems that we do have with longer drive distances and all the rest. So I, you know, this is fairly close to downtown. It's a, a walkable, bikeable corridor. And I think relatively dense development in that context where infill opportunities present themselves is in line with the comprehensive plan and the goals of our city. Some of the outstanding issues I think I'd still like to work on and address include decoupling of parking from, from rent or purchase prices. It's, it's similar to a parking cash out where, when it's built in for everybody, it mandates and incentivizes car use and car ownership, even for, for those who don't need it. So we're, you know, we have many, many adopted goals that are trying to move us away from single occupancy vehicle use and encourage and incentivize other modes. And I think not making people who choose to live without a car or choose to utilize transit as their primary mode, not making them automatically pay for parking and therefore subsidize other units is, is the way we should be going. I still have some concerns with the whole drive aisle alley issue in particular. This is an issue for me with regard to the UDO guidance on this, which says that PUDs need to provide a greater level of internal connectivity and connectivity to surrounding developments than would be required by the UDO if the project were not being developed in the PUD zoning district. It's difficult to meet in the context of this site. I think Mr. Gurlik suggested that, that it's anticipated to mean car connectivity, street connectivity. I think an argument can be made that greater pedestrian connectivity to the, to the B line, since it fronts on that as a street of sorts, just a non-car street, helps to meet this requirement. But I also think the idea of an alley that would actually connect into the existing neighborhood would, would be some benefit. I know this is a big possible change that I'm still interested in discussing at some level. You know, Madison and Rogers has an alley between it. The homes on the west side of South Madison Street have alley access. Alley access for the east side of Madison Street homes would, I think, add value to those places in the sense that they could add accessory dwelling units in the future if they wanted. They would have access to the back of their property via an alley. And it's, again, generally better urban form. But I'm not sure if we will get there on that or not. I think the idea of an alley or some changes to the drive aisle as well could help address some of the impervious surface concerns. Regarding the, the storage business to the north, I very much appreciate Mr. McBride sharing his concerns in our two meetings, but they primarily seem like private contract issues to me, things that will be addressed in time as, as needed. There, there are contractual obligations there that the petitioner will need to continue to meet. The building height issue that a few McDowell Gardens neighborhood residents have expressed concern about. I'm curious, I guess, and I wonder if petitioner could provide this at our next meeting. I'm curious about sightlines. So if you think of the horizontal distance from the back of your typical Madison Street home to the edge of the warehouse building as it exists, and then the height of that building, you've got kind of a triangle. But of course, you have a much more substantial setback to the, the new buildings. And using that same angle, that sightline angle, you would have a higher height down at the, at the, at the development as proposed. And I'm kind of curious what that difference is in terms of the sightline for, for residents. I know four stories seems like a lot higher than the current warehouse, and it is. But it is also set quite a bit farther back from the location of the current building. So I tried to do some estimates myself, but I wasn't very successful, I'm afraid. I think that mostly covers my thoughts on the petition. I know I said I'd be abstaining tonight just because I have a few outstanding issues that I, that I kind of want to look at and consider further. But in general, I'm feeling favorable towards this project and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it and the, the number of community benefits that would, that would, that this project would bring that are above and beyond what we would normally see with a, a permitted use in a, in a standard based zoning district. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from committee members? Yes, Councilmember Volan.
So I've been trying to do a little math here. I calculate that the, the total square footage of the properties in question is around 147,000 square feet. To try to get to this question of, you know, how much surface is impervious. But I mean, my concerns about parking, and like, I guess, let's put it this way, we could get to, much closer to the percentage that the Environmental Commission says we should stick to. If, I mean, the, one of the big uses of impervious surfaces, parking, is parking on the access road to get to that parking. I mean, just the, out of 147, I just, I hadn't done all the math here, but real quick. Six divided 147, so, oh. So the circle, the 45 foot radius turnaround for fire trucks that will be used once in a great while is 4%, 4.3% of the entire square footage of the property. Okay, the 63 parking spaces at nine feet wide by 18 feet deep are another 10,000 square feet. That's, that's 8% of the, of the entire square footage of the property. Not, I'm not saying we should get rid of them, although we have an obligation to, to put, you know, I haven't even measured like the actual 24 feet by however long the, the road is that connects all those spaces to the circle and to Hillside. Okay, so like, if we wanted to get there, we, I mean, the, the petitioners actually already have a solution. They have extra parking, unallocated parking in the garage that they're building on building seven. But one quick way we could reduce impervious surface here is to reduce the amount of open uncovered street parking, which is another reason, just, just another reason to push for less parking on this property, especially considering that this property is, this project is being proposed as it is because it abuts a major new park. But there are reasons to reduce parking that are not just environmental. Again, the standards I use, I mean, this is my, this is Councilmember Volan's opinion, but 0.5 spaces per bedroom is more than enough maximum. And the petitioner seemed to come close to it, except for this big exception of the 1.61 spaces. I'm not, we, we have to get those numbers better to figure this out. But the commercial standard should be no more than two spaces per thousand square feet. Three spaces for 1,000 square feet is suburban, is sprawl level parking. It's just not necessary. I don't blame the petitioners for being concerned about making sure the, the retail is successful. But you just don't need that much parking for it to be successful. Okay, especially in a place that, you know, the, the pricing of the parking is crucial. Okay, one big reason why I definitely want to push for a requirement to separate the cost of parking from the rent is, you know, that until people know what it actually costs, they're never going to take that cost seriously. And the, the petitioner should be concerned about it too, because frankly, you know, parking is the lowest and worst use. I mean, it is literally antithetical to the goals of the Environmental Commission in every, every level. And so, like, it's in everyone's interest to reduce the parking. And I include the petitioners in that. Especially in a project like this with such an awkward, I mean, layout that it requires this long, thin, huge, but still huge amount of impervious surface just to accommodate cars and the very occasional fire truck. I mean, is there not some way that in an emergency, the fire truck could drive onto the, the parkland? You know, like, how often is there going to be a need for a fire truck to come out? I know that's not the way that Tim Clapp thinks and he'll, he'll, you know, definitely challenge that. So, but these conversations that we're going to have this week are really important. I just cannot emphasize enough, the, 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 the member of the public who expressed concern about there being not enough parking at the same time that this building is, you know, environmentally unfriendly is, has got an inherent conflict, okay? Either we want parking or we want green space. There is no in between. Cars are not green. The roads they drive on are not green. The impervious surface required to accommodate them are not green at all. If we're going to have parking though, it's better to have it structured where it'll take less footprint than it is. better to have it structured, where it'll take less footprint than it is to have it just spreading out behind every building. So we have to ask the question, how important is it for each townhouse resident to have a car parked adjacent to their building, right next to their building? I mean, if we're willing to make that change, we might be able to make this a greener project. But we all have to be thinking about this question every time. Parking and the environment are flip sides of the same coin. So as far as the project goes, I mean, I generally agree with Councilmember Flaherty that, you know, I like most of what I've seen here. This issue is the hang-up for me. So I don't think I have a choice but to abstain, because I'd like to see a dense development here. But I do take the Environmental Commission's concern seriously. But I think that the solution is entirely in our attitude towards cars. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Hi, thanks. I want to know if this is okay. Just wanted to kind of ask a question of the committee members. I mean, I'm pretty much on board with what folks have said so far. There are things that I like about this, and there are things that I feel like I'm not ready yet to, I mean, I think we could work on it between now and this week, but I don't know that it would make sense to do a recommendation for me. So, I mean, we can keep doing our final comments, but I wonder if it makes sense to send this back for second reading, or like, try to send this to a third committee meeting at some point, for us to work on it without, just because when there's nine of us, it takes longer.
We don't have a choice.
We have to just go back.
It has to go back to the full council. The full council could then refer it back to us, but it would be up to the nine members of the full council.
Sorry, just.
Okay, so it can.
Councilmember Flaherty, as parliamentarian, do you have something to add?
There's another relevant piece of information I'd explored with Mr. Lucas previously, which is that we have a 90-day window from when it is certified by Plan Commission. And we'd actually run into that a day, I think, a day or two prior to two regular sessions from now. So the regular session planned for April 21st is past our deadline. So if this were to go to a third committee meeting hypothetically on April 14th, it would take then a special session of the council to meet the 90-day window. So we're challenged by the calendar in some respects on that, too. So just wanted to add that information.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger, do you have final comments on the ordinance?
I am okay. I'm honestly okay really not elaborating like past what the other committee members have so far. I agree with a lot of what they've said. So I'm okay.
All right. Well, I will just say that I also agree with, with everything that Councilmember Flaherty said. Basically, I think it's a good proposal. I am enthusiastic about the green building that will be applied to these structures, the green building principles. Also, the affordable housing that will be created as part of this development is a very positive thing for the community. I would like to explore decreasing impervious surface through decreasing the width of the drive aisle and the roundabout, as Councilmember Volan has said. I also would like to see rent or sale decoupled from parking. And the one thing I disagree with my colleagues is that I will be ready to vote in favor of this proposal, knowing that we can still add reasonable conditions next week. So rather than repeat anything else, I'll leave it at that and see if we have a motion.
Move, do pass on ordinance 2107?
Second.
All right, we have moved to pass. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I'll abstain.
Councilmember Volan?
Abstain.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Abstain.
And I will vote yes. So that is 130.
103.
I always get that wrong. 103. All right. So we will send this back to the full council, which will meet in regular session next Wednesday with a recommendation of 103. And I think we will be doing some work between now and then to draft some additional reasonable conditions. So I want to thank the petitioner and staff for their patience this evening. And Ms. Lacy, is there anything you needed to add?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you to Ms. Lacy and Mr. Lucas, our staff assistants this evening. And we are hereby adjourned.